So, good afternoon.
We need you with a microphone.
I can't use my teacher voice. Good afternoon. HCA is going to use its appointment slot to call the board into the realities that our educators and our students face in the underfunded special education budget. And then after, like we do with our resorted practices professional development, when the students call us into their space, we would like it if you could affirm what you hear from the testimony that you hear. Thank you.
My name is Allison Vinuti and I'm a special educator in ITL at an elementary school here in Howard County. I'd like to start by giving acknowledgement to my own school administrators who have helped the special ed team advocate for more staffing and have also jumped in to help when they can. Having said that, we are completely understaffed in special ed and each year seems to get progressively worse. My school is relatively small but has a total of 323 total academic IEP service hours per week. We have 11 students at our school who need CAS all day, yet our understaffed team consists of four teachers, three paras, two SA's, and two TE's. The staffing is not enough to cover the needs of our students. We're always told that in special ed, our staffing is based off of projections at the end of a school year. The problem here is that the end-of-year projections often don't match up with the actual enrollment we have at the beginning of the year, leaving us completely understaffed. Since those end-of-year projections were made, we've had eight students either qualify for IEPs or move into our community with IEPs. We've had an additional six IEP referrals since the beginning of the school year. However, we haven't received any additional staffing. To address the needs of these new students, we submitted a CAS request form on the very first day of school requesting additional staffing. To date, this request has not been granted. When enrollment goes up and general ed classrooms reach a certain size, principals can apply for another teaching position. I've seen it happen over the summer or during the school year. The same practice should also apply to special ed. Even when all 11 people on my team are at school, we're short-staffed. So on days when the student is in crisis, or if there are any people on our team out, our staffing situation worsens. Due to our limited staffing, there have been days this year when the special ed teachers at my school didn't get their lunch and/or planning. One of the reasons we're in special ed is because we're compassionate people. However, we should never be put in a situation where we have to choose between staying to help a student in need or eating lunch. In the 41 student days of the first quarter, special ed staff members had to fill out 13 employee incident injury reports. Having a special ed staff member being injured every three days is unacceptable. Just this week, we've had three more employee incident injury reports written. I truly believe that with more staffing, we could be proactive instead of simply reactive, meaning less injuries for staff and more learning for students. We felt the effects of our limited staffing more this year due to significant behaviors in students in crisis. Three different students at my school have required up to four staff members to be involved in order to safely manage the students' behavior and de-escalate crisis situations. Just one of these students has eloped from the building three times, pinched 33 times, kicked 11 times, bit four times, and scratched 85 times, all in a single day. In this kind of situation, no instruction is occurring for the student in crisis or any of the other students whose coverage was pulled so the safety care trained staff members could intervene. In terms of the SA and TE staffing allocations for this year, one SA was allocated for four different students who need full-day support, including the student whose behaviors I just described. One SA to split between four students simply isn't enough. When comparing our SA and TE allocations from last year to this year, three students we received staffing for last year were not included in the staffing allocation this year, even though the students are still at our school and the CAS request forms were submitted for each of them. While I am grateful for any additional staff that I can get for my school, SA's and TE's only work a six-hour day and therefore are not even at school for the entire student day. Since SA's and TE's only work six hours during the student day, it's also challenging for the special educators to meet with these staff members for training purposes or to discuss the needs of the students. We have a TE who requested to be safety care trained, but as a TE, this individual is not entitled to the same trainings offered to HCPSS employees. We're putting the least trained staff members with our most intense students, which isn't setting anyone up for success. The bottom line is that we need more para positions in special ed. I invite you to come live a day in the life of a special educator. You could go to any school on any given day and see the staffing issues for yourself. From discussions at the monthly special ed ITL meetings I attend, I know that these challenges and concerns aren't limited to my school. I also strongly believe that the role of special ed ITL at the elementary level should be a full-time administrative position. To also have a caseload that you're responsible for is like having two full-time jobs. For the first quarter, my average workday was 11.75 hours per day. Even with workdays that long, I still had to use a sick day last week to catch up on paperwork and start working on my quarterly progress reports. Last year, I worked 664 hours past contract, and already it looks to be more this year, at over 200 so far. This workload has had negative impacts on my health, my marriage, my well-being, and my desire to continue as a special educator. Sorry. This is my 13th year as a special educator and it will be my last. Teaching is the only thing I've ever wanted to do, but the current system has made it impossible for me to effectively do my job. Most days, I go home exhausted, heartbroken, and defeated because I cannot adequately provide for a population of children who desperately need help. For my own well-being, I need to make the switch to general ed. In addition to my special education certification, I'm certified in early childhood education, elementary education, and middle school, so I'm hoping to stay in Howard County as a general ed teacher. Last year, I put in a transfer request to 22 schools for a general ed position, and this year, I will put in the maximum number of transfers allowed. However, if a transfer to a general ed position isn't available in Howard County, I plan on applying to other counties. Sorry. In Dr. Morano's strategic call to action, one of the desired outcomes specifically states high-quality special education services are delivered in a consistent and collaborative manner. In order to do this, the special education team must have the adequate staffing and resources it needs. We cannot continue to slash budgets and cut teaching positions and resources from schools, all while raising the bar and increasing expectations for what teachers should be accomplishing daily. Students with IEPs tend to be our most vulnerable and needy students, so more needs to be done to support them. Ultimately, the students are the ones who suffer, so we cannot let our budget restrictions prevent them from having all of the resources, staffing, and supports they need to be successful. As a school system, we have to do better. Our staff and students deserve better. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Dr. Morano and members of the board. My name is Karen Philippelli and I am a 17-year special education para educator for Howard County Public Schools, and I'm proud to say all 17 of those years have been spent at Oakland Mills High School. In my 17 years, I have seen education and the students I support go through numerous changes, both positive and challenging. The positives have included students receiving instruction in a least restrictive environment among their peers, more opportunities for our students with the greatest needs, the addition of allied sports, a focus on all students accepting each other and their differences, the advancement of technology to support communication and instruction, and lastly, the commitment and perseverance of my special education colleagues across the county to help every student, regardless of their learning differences, reach their full potential. This commitment has been and is still met with great challenges. The number of students requiring special education services increases every school year. Additionally, the multitude of needs students have varies each school year. Every day is different. A non-verbal student with autism may be in crisis, requiring two or three staff members to use their safety care training. Staffing are often injured with concussions, bites, cuts, and bruises, sending them to consentor for medical attention. The remaining staff are left to cover the class. Quite often, planning periods are lost, lunches and breaks cannot be taken because there is not enough staff to cover during a crisis. But because we are dedicated to our students, we start every day anew. Many of our students lack the academic skills they need to be successful as they move from the elementary to secondary levels. In the past, review-level classes were offered for our students entering high school with below-grade-level skills. This is no longer the case. As a result, para educators spend instructional time providing one-on-one support to a student, even though there are other IEP students in the class who need assistance. Without sitting directly next to a student, the student cannot remain on task. Students are frustrated, and we as educators are frustrated for them. The frustration our students feel results in disruptive behaviors or shutting down completely. Students come to us with trauma-based behaviors that interfere with learning. Teachers and staff need to spend a great deal of class time addressing behaviors before instructing can begin. These behaviors may be verbal or physical. To de-escalate a situation, a para educator may have to escort a student on a walk around the school to decompress, or escort them to see their guidance counselor, who may not be available at that moment. There are not enough school psychologists or guidance counselors in our buildings to support the number of students who need mental health services. While the number of special education students attending our schools continues to increase throughout the year, our staffing does not, which means our staff are faced with unmanageable caseloads. A well-written IEP that accurately and thoroughly reflects the needs, goals, and accommodations of a student will consist of well over 40 pages and take days to write. This simply cannot be accomplished within a school day in addition to co-teaching responsibilities and IEP meetings. For their own mental wellness, time in the evenings or on the weekends that should be spent with family and to re-energize is instead spent working on IEPs and IEP report cards in order to meet deadlines. The work-life balance is rarely attainable. Time to meet with support staff to discuss lessons and accommodations is limited. As a team, we somehow make it work, although we are frustrated knowing that with additional staff, additional time, and additional supports, so much more could be accomplished. Our students deserve nothing less. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
We have two more educators that are going to talk to you. We could probably have as many as you have had redistricting testimony, actually, but we just have two more.
Good afternoon. My name is Sylvia Hennessy and I'm the 2018-2019 Howard County Teacher of the Year. Sitting next to me is my special education co-teacher, Lauren Williams, for the school year. We work at the amazing Guilford Elementary School, and we're proud of our school community. And we want to start by saying thank you for having us and for allowing us to represent our school and our profession by sharing our experiences and hopes for not only our students but all students in Howard County. We can't help but start with some celebrations about the wonderful people we have on our team at Guilford. We are so fortunate to have staff that is truly collaborative, hands-on, and selfless in their work with our children. We have seen everyone, from our front-office staff to our custodians and even our administrators, jump in to support anywhere that is needed. Whether it's coverage during lunch and recess, or additional eyes or hands during a crisis moment, no one is on an island at Guilford. We have received advice and guidance from the Department of Special Ed Behavioral Specialists and Support Staff. We have administrators that have literally come running in heels when there is a call for help. We are an incredible team, and we have spent years rising to the occasion as our profession changes and expectations increase. We're here today to say that we truly believe we are at a crossroads in our county, and we are here to ask for help. We love our jobs and we love our students, but we are also exhausted, emotionally defeated, and devastated about what we can no longer provide for our kids. We're here to ask for one thing, and we know it's what everyone is asking for, but we need funding and support for additional staff in Howard County Public Schools.
When I finished my master's degree in special education, I had choices of where to go next. I observed special education programming at multiple counties in the area, and I chose Howard County for a reason. I believe in inclusion. My whole educational and life philosophy revolves around the idea that everyone deserves to belong and to feel like part of a community. I came here because even in the most restrictive programs, I saw students eating lunch with peers, being exposed to general education curriculum, and feeling like a larger part of a comprehensive school environment. In my years as an educator here, I still see these values coming from our county leaders, and I still love the philosophy that governs our work here in Howard County. However, I also now see our most vulnerable students feeling more isolated and less capable as a result of lack of the supports that they need. As we continue to push for including more and more learners with diverse abilities and intensive needs, we are not considering the supports and funding required to help them be successful. As a result, they are unable to meet their individualized goals, teachers are unable to meet legally required service hours while maintaining safety throughout their building, and I believe all students are suffering. On my current caseload, I have 17 students in two grade levels. I have five students with significantly interfering, non-compliant, and aggressive behaviors who require regular crisis intervention supports. In total, I am responsible for 136 service hours a week with one para professional on my team. With 112 and a half instructional hours available in an actual week, it literally takes every hour, minute, and second that we have just to meet the legal requirements within our school building. This doesn't take into account any time for required crisis intervention, close adult supervision, personal-professional development, time for mental health, or any reason that we may be down-staffed on a given day. The reality is that I spend most of my time, every day, implementing restraints and seclusions or other crisis intervention strategies that do not pertain to academic instruction. I have been hit, kicked, scratched, and spit on. I've had a concussion and an injury to my jawbone. I have been called names that you would be shocked an elementary-school-age student would even know, and I've had my life threatened on multiple occasions. Despite it all, I truly and honestly love my job, my coworkers, and every single one of my students with no exceptions. But the longer I take the abuse without advocating for help, the less I can envision myself continuing in the profession long-term. I can't do this job if I don't have the space and capacity to teach. My kids can't make progress if I don't see them. I believe in inclusion. I want every single one of my students to stay with me, but they all need more. They need enough staff to focus on preventative behavior strategies, not responsive, and to address academic objectives on a consistent basis. They need consistency in interventions and a routine to help them make progress. If we're going to tell them that they belong in Howard County, we must put the resources into helping them be successful also. Inclusive education is more than just being physically present in a school building.
I want to add to this conversation some information about what this looks like in the general education setting. Four students on Lauren's caseload, including two with significant behavioral objectives, are in my classroom of 23 kindergarten students. In addition, I have four students with significant interfering behaviors and self-management needs that have not yet been identified for services. Also, I have two students who are significantly behind in all academic areas and are in process for receiving additional academic supports. Finally, I have another two students who receive ESOL services and one in our Academic Life Skills Program, working on a modified curriculum. In total, this makes 13 of my 23 students who require some level of intervention in order to be successful in school, and only seven of them actually receive services. The reality in my classroom is that it takes every ounce of my focus, patience, and energy just to get through the day safely. I am considered IEP-required Close Adult Supervision, or CAS, for the majority of the school day. I am considered a part of the crisis intervention team, while I am also expected to implement new reading and writing curriculum, observe and teach new learning behaviors, and differentiate instruction for 23 very diverse learners. I have also been physically and verbally abused, had my personal property damaged, and literally broken up physical altercations in my classroom. Part of the reason I believe I was selected as Howard County's Teacher of the Year is that I have a unique ability to build rapport and relationships with students and adults within my classroom. I prefer to have the inclusion room every school year. I enjoy working with other teachers and adults in the building. I enjoy helping all students succeed, and I work for that very tirelessly. Those are skills that have had me stand out and be successful in other areas of my life, and I feel like they're no longer enough for me to be successful. More often than not this year, I feel like I'm failing. And my environment is not conducive to learning or safe for all students or even safe for Since the start of the year, I've had three panic attacks at work. I've had to take off two days because I was in physical pain from stress and anxiety and was unable to be in the building. I'm also a parent of a child in Howard County Public Schools, and she attends my school. And I brought her there because I love the community of the school. It is hard as a teacher and as a parent to see her and other children not receiving the instruction that they deserve because of interfering behaviors and inappropriate amounts of support in our buildings.
We wanted to bring your attention a little bit to the term "close adult supervision" that we've heard a couple times this afternoon. This is something that we see on IEPs more and more frequently. When indicated, it usually specifies the purpose for the close adult supervision and what it should look like throughout the school day. On my caseload, I have seven students who require close adult supervision all day to assist in transitions, interactions with other students, but mostly just general safety. This time can be legally covered by a special education teacher, a special education support staff member, but also by a general education teacher. And this is largely where the problem lies in getting the supports that we need. When the budgeting is done, the severity of the needs for these students with CAS is not being considered. In addition, students added to the school building after budgeting is done are not being considered. I have two students in my building that have 21-plus hours of close adult supervision that were added since staffing was done last year, and we've received no additional staff for them. Many students with CAS require one-on-one or even two-on-one adult support at all times in order for themselves and others to remain safe in the environment. One adult in our building is frequently expected to be covering CAS for up to five or more students at a time. For many of our most vulnerable students, this isn't physically possible for us. School staff at Guilford Elementary and elsewhere in the county are becoming more and more frustrated with the lack of supports, teachers not being able to meet service hours in lieu of safety, and students not making sufficient progress.
So we're asking for your help. We want you to please help our school and our county send a message that teachers matter and that students matter by putting funding in place to provide for additional adults in school buildings now. This is nothing we can wait on. It's past due. We want you to tell our most diverse learners that their needs, although significant, are important and valued here in Howard County in a real way, and that we want them to be successful. The decisions made in the coming days regarding staffing ratios will determine the future of Howard County Public Schools. Teachers all over the country are fighting for the same thing, meeting the needs of our students. Please hear us when we say that we can't possibly do anything more without your help. We are burning out. Thank you for your time.
So I asked you at the beginning to do what we do with our students? I'm sorry. I asked you at the beginning to do what we do with our students when our students are calling us into their spaces, and our educators have poured their hearts out to you and told you what they're facing every day, and it's across the whole county. And I would ask that you affirm what you heard from them tonight.
Ms. Coombs.
Thank you for your service. You do something that takes a very special piece of your heart and your brain to do. And I know the rate of burnout is high, and it's so distressing. And the thing that amazes me the most is how you get injured and you still love that child as if they're your own, and you still come back and fight for them. And you are such an important part of our school system. And I hope and pray that we can do something better and focus on this because we know the needs are going up, and it's not acceptable to leave you in this position and to hope that somebody will apply for that job next year because they're going to leave after a couple of years if they don't get the support. So thank you for your service, and I hear you.
Dr. Wu.
Thank you very much for speaking in front of the board. And it's a very touching story, and we really appreciate your service. So which kind of ratio you want to increase? How much you want to increase, in your opinion?
I think that this year, we requested 248 special ed positions, and I think we got a third of them.
So for the next year, how much you want to increase?
I think this past year, oh, I'm sorry. I think this past year in the budget, there was a request for 248 about positions, and I think we got a third of them. So, and that was just to bring us up to a standard that we hadn't met over the past four years. So we're underfunded.
Sure, I agree.
Okay, Ms. Catternio.
None of this is a surprise. That's what's sad. And I'm sorry. I think that we need to do a better job protecting funding to special ed, especially as we're getting funding for Kerwin, and to not supplant that and to make sure it's dedicated to special ed. But I would also venture to ask my colleagues to challenge them to actually come and shadow teachers and para educators in all levels. I think each and every one of us, especially as we approach the budget season, we need to get in the classrooms unannounced and come in shadow and see what it's like.
We'd welcome you.
And I'm sorry that I haven't done that. I always say I'm going to do it, and I apologize because, you know, how else are we going to know unless we get inside the buildings and live your lives, well, observe your lives? Because I can't imagine living, doing what you do. I honestly cannot. I mean, my utmost respect for what you do every single day, and you keep going back. So I think that I would challenge all of my colleagues to go and do that and to show you respect and at all levels. Paras, ITLs, special ed teachers, the behavior analysts, to shadow all of you in the coming weeks and get inside the classrooms. So, thank you. I have so much more I could say. I know that you said you need bodies, but I think I would venture to say you need trained, qualified bodies.
I do, yes, yes. Well said.
Highly trained, yeah. Thank you.
So I would like to share my voice to this. As you probably know, I served as a pupil personnel worker for almost 20 years, working with special education, with pairs, with the changing impact of special needs that our children are bringing to our classrooms. I don't remember when I first started seeing so many kids who would elope, who would run out of the classroom, run out of the school building, which means that's all hands on deck. That's all hands on deck. So I totally appreciate what you have been sharing with us. I know it's a challenge that you meet with your heart, but you also have to take care of you, and I know it's hard. So thank you for all you do. I think this is a very appropriate time for you to come to us with this request. It's very timely, and we look to support you as we go forward. Ms. Delmonte Small.
I too want to thank you for what you do because I could not, I cannot imagine because it's not my skill set. But thank God we have people like you who have passion and want to do this. We talk a lot about our most vulnerable children here in Howard County. You are dealing every day with our most vulnerable children, and I think we have to do a better job of listening to you. And I agree with my colleague, coming and shadowing you, I think is the best way for us to do that. And I also agree, the training piece of this is so important because when we train you, we are investing in you, and we're saying we care about your expertise. We want you to grow that expertise because by giving you those opportunities, it's going to benefit everybody. The funding issue is horrific, but we are going to have to make some very challenging choices. But when we make these choices as a board, I think we have to start thinking about our most vulnerable students and starting there and figuring out how we can give you the support. Because if any child in a school is not supported, it can impact the whole school, and we want you to be able to do your jobs. Your jobs are hard enough without all of these other pieces to it. And I really am hoping that we can work as a board and work with our other electeds to do what we can do to make sure that here in Howard County, we are providing the best education for all of our students. But the other piece of that is making sure we're providing the best professional development and support and assistance to the educators and the staff who support them. So thank you again very much for what you do.
Ms. Taj.
When you guys say things like, you know, that most days you feel like failures or that you're not meeting the needs of the classroom, you are. Just know that every day you show up, that means something, and that your value should never be diminished by your experience. Know that every day that you finish your work and you go home, because you know what? We can't even get teachers in the classroom anymore. We can't even get teachers in the classroom anymore. So, what you do means something. It really does. It is the most valuable job, and it's entrusted with our most valuable asset. Your value is immense. What you do every day is, never doubt that. Never take that home. Thank you for coming and speaking with us. Thank you for being vulnerable, for crying, for sharing. I know it takes strength to come here and do that. I appreciate you.
Ms. Mallow.
Thank you for your personal stories. You have shone a light on something that I don't think any of us understood, not to the degree that you are feeling and demonstrating and speaking so eloquently about. I would like to fix it today. I don't know how. But I can promise you that all of us here will try to figure it out. Actually, we'll probably ask Dr. Materano to figure it out. And thank you for what you do, and you do make a difference. And I think, I mean, it's easy to see that you, when you get an award like Teacher of the Year, you know you're being recognized.
The tears just won't stop at this point.
But there's only one of those per year. And we can't do enough to recognize every one of you that's an unsung hero, that isn't getting an award, and you are so critical to what we need, to what these students need. And we can't thank you enough for being there, for taking the time to be here, and know that you make a difference. It may not be the difference you want to make, but we thank you profoundly for making the difference. And I hope that, I hope that we don't lose any of you. I hope that we instead find the supports that you need to stay in the classroom, to stay with our students, because we need you.
Dr. Materano.
I have, thank you for being here, and I want the other two teachers who were up here. Can you just kind of come a little closer so I can direct my attention to you as well? Board members, I'm going to be very direct and very focused on this issue. I hear you, and none of this is a surprise. I'm well aware of these issues. And to address your comment, Ms. Mallow, I appreciate you saying you're going to ask me to figure it out. We have figured it out. We have presented a plan in the last two budgets that fully fund, as our president of the Teachers Union, Colleen Morse, has said, that if that were to be fully funded, we would not be here. Each year, we have cut and cut from our budget for our most vulnerable students. We have a plan. We know what needs to be done, and the continual cuts on the backs of our teachers is unacceptable. And so, we find ourselves at a crossroads, and I appreciate you being here because I'm going to ask you, I'm going to leave here in a moment, come off the dais, and I'm going to ask you to join in my office for more detail because I'm well aware of it, and it breaks my heart. Some of you have said this is not a new, this is nothing new. We have known this for years about the role of special educators. I also will be releasing a report to our board that talks about all of our general educators in our school system. Listen to what I'm about to say. The number of our general educators in our school system who have special education certification, who have already left the role of being a special educator and now would not go back to that role, even if we provided an incentive to do so based upon the experience of which they've had. And we have a number of individuals in that situation, have that dual certification. You've all expressed your heart tonight based upon the fact you love your children first and foremost, and you want to do the very best for them. But you've also reached your own tipping point, and what I hear about what you're saying tonight the most, that breaks my heart. In order to take care of others, you have to take care of yourself. And each one of those, each one of you have expressed your own concerns tonight at your level of vulnerability this evening. I commend you for doing that, but I also recognize we need to make certain you're taken care of so that you can take care of our most vulnerable children. And so, I will continue to advance what needs to be done as far as the budgetary requirements. At the same time, if you could stay this evening, you'll also hear the impact of our cumulative financial concerns over years, a healthcare deficit that is continuing to shackle us in terms of things of which we're trying to do within the school system, additional shortfalls of which we have, needing more money beyond maintenance of effort to drive what needs to be done. And that is fully articulated in the budgets that have been presented, but not being able to fully fund it based upon resources. And where we are, and whoever said it, I've wrote down copious notes, about being at a crossroads, we're beyond the crossroads. Those crossroads have occurred. We're now making do. And the reality as board members, which I want you to understand, and thank you for allowing me to go a little deeper with this, is the fact that we, one of you said we make decisions about staffing last year. We do. But then, over the summer, I always ask for how many students arrive because of the outstanding programs of which we offer that aren't accounted in that staffing pattern, that we're not able to allocate the resources necessary because of that. And each one of your schools and all across this district have a number of students who do that. Special education is doing an outstanding job of providing the supports, but they don't have the funding to provide the position that are needed to provide those supports, and we're doing the best that can be done. But we've got to do more than just the best that can be done. So, on that note, I want to acknowledge and fully validate everything that you're saying. I want to fully validate everything that you are saying as your superintendent, and we will continue to advocate, as has been done in our actions. But I'm also going to ask you to continue to mobilize because the reaction that you received from our board tonight, I don't want them to know this, but sometimes they tune me out because I talk about it all the time as superintendent. I need you to understand, your voice is critical for what's occurring on that day-to-day basis, and I need your voices to be loud. We also have another elected official here this evening, Deb Young, who is a member of the council, who is listening to all of this, and we need to advocate to our electeds as well all across. This is not just a school system issue. This is a community issue. And as you've heard me speak all the time about making certain that every child graduates from our high schools, college, and career-ready, not just some, but all, how do we respond to our most vulnerable children is where we're going to all be judged based upon all of this. So, I thank you for your attention, your focus, and your dedication to being here this evening, and I'm validating everything that you are saying. And if you could just give me ten more minutes, I'd like you to join me in my office for a deeper discussion after the end of this. And I thank you, and board members, what they are saying is evidence of having visited the schools, having shadowed, having been seeing the work of which we're addressing every day, the number of elopers, the challenges of which we have every day. And if you looked at the plan of which we submitted to this board about the additional need for psychologists, for social workers, for PPWs, for counselors, additional support is all predicated on everything that they have eloquently said today in terms of their feelings, emotions, and the reality of what's occurring. And so, I appreciate it. It's beyond the crossroads. We're beyond that. We need to take action, and we need to continue those discussions as we continue to move forward in our budget process. And you will see the reality of that budget process as we go through our audit information today, to see some of the challenges which we have been grappling with over decades of cumulative neglect in terms of some of the financial matters of which we're dealing with and providing that balance. So, again, I thank you, and I'm going to ask everybody right now to applaud all of our special educators and all of our educators.